Sorry, I thought you were talking about.
Right, they don't let you know that. And then you want to make sure you sign it.
I think you're right.
That was the most difficult for you, I know. I'm sorry. 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 Yes. Yes.
Oh, no. Unless Zaliyah wants a child. Okay, let me see if Zaliyah wants a whole one. Which one's a short one? Constance. Yeah, just in case you need a roll. All right. Is that stuff? Well, I wouldn't use it my voice tonight. Finance is first, right? Okay. Just get this showing on. Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the finance committee of the whole meeting of the board of directors of the school district for the city of Allentown for today, August 21st, 2025. Prior to tonight's meeting, an informational executive session was held. The purpose of the executive session was to engage in informational updates presented to the board on a number of district initiatives as well as an update regarding the process for the evaluation of the superintendent, confidential matters pertaining to personnel, review of special education due process matters, informational updates and discussions with council pertaining to fiscal audit, district real estate, tax assessment appeal, and costs associated with the neighborhood improvement zone, and an informational update with council regarding negotiations with the Teamsters Union. The board welcomes and invites public comment. You may address the board on agenda and/or on non-agenda items. The first opportunity to comment is at the beginning of the meeting and is limited to agenda items only. Comment cards must be received by the start of the meeting, which is now. We will not be reviewing public cards once the meeting begins. A copy of the public comment policy is located on the table next to the comment cards. Per our board's policy, any person may address the board in accordance with the procedures and limitations of this policy, either on issues presented and resolutions being considered or on other matters affecting the administration, management, or operation of the district. Remarks of a personal nature directed against any individual will be ruled out of order. If you choose to address the board, please fill out a comment card and hand it to the board secretary, Mr. Simonson. Comment cards are located at the podium near the door. Once recognized, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. And now for the superintendent remarks. Dr. Burks?
Thank you. Good evening, school board directors, to members of the public, to all our community leaders, of course, to all our students and families, and to my team. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the 2025-26 school year. Woo-hoo! Before we get started tonight, I just want to take a moment to recognize all members of our learning community and all the great work that you're doing in preparation for the opening of school. For the past few weeks, we've engaged in a lot of activities from our Executive Leadership Learning Academy, learning for all of our leaders throughout the district, as well as welcoming more than 200 new educators to our learning community, as well as to, of course, we had our sensational, fantastic fun at our back-to-school bash. Yay! I want to thank all of our, and I need a little volume, Mr. Delfine. And I'd like to also thank our community partners. We had 90 community partners, almost double the amount of partners support our back-to-school bash. So, everyone who supported our back-to-school bash, I want to thank you, and I want to thank again Ms. Monley and the team and everyone else who worked very hard to make it a success, and our partners from the city of Allentown as well as the Chamber of Commerce. So, thank you so much, and we're excited. And just as a way of welcoming us back to school, we are welcoming now everyone back to school. Do you want to play the video? So, last week, our back-to-school bash, as I mentioned, had more than 9,000 people. And again, I want to thank everyone for their support. And additionally, Monday, as I mentioned, we had our convocation. And then we named our, we had, throughout the year, we celebrate many individuals. We have 700 this year. Through our, as we know, we're all lighting the way, and we have identified people who are the light of our organization. And so, 700 people were recognized last year. And so then, at our convocation, we had people who were of the year. So, as I want to thank the following people. One, for support staff of the year, Ms. Amika Gatley. Woo-hoo, safety officer. Our mini administrator of the year was Daria Custer. Woo-hoo, Principal Jefferson, Jefferson Elementary School. And Ms. Custer, if you are listening, I just want to say I commend you for a job well done. And I've watched you personally grow a great deal in the past three years, so we are extremely proud of you. So, thank you so much for your leadership and service. And to our teacher of the year, we know everyone's had a teacher, you know, everyone remembers a teacher, and as we know, the teacher is the greatest lever in impacting student achievement. So, I need a drumroll for the teacher of the year. Ms. Brandy Renko for Rob Middle School. I want to thank you, Ms. Renko, for your many years of service. I think she's up to 25 years of service here in the district, so thank you for your hard work and commitment. And what always happens is, when you do a great job of being a teacher, then we want you to become an administrator. So, I think she's going to serve in the Allentown School District. In her administrative ranks. So, thank you very much for your hard work and commitment. As we step into the school year, I want to extend my deepest gratitude to our facilities team, everyone in our operations team, as well, of course, all the educators for preparing us all for going back to school. Because of you, we're looking forward to seeing all our clean schools and all the technology and all the great things happening so that we can start on Monday, August 25th, when all the buses roll throughout Allentown and the school bells ring, and all of our 16,700 lovely, sensational students will be opening, coming back into our schools as well as their families. So, I want to thank you, and I think now we may have the video ready to play. Welcome everyone back to school. In the Allentown School District, we are lighting the way. We are putting students first by embracing innovation, creating pathways for tomorrow, and driving academic excellence. School begins on Monday, August 25th, 2025. Please join us in creating conditions where everyone within our learning community feels safe, valued, and powered. Meet all learning needs. We showed you the video. Stuff on Facebook and all our social channels that school begins on Monday, August 25th. Everyone say, Monday, August 25th!
Monday, August 25th!
I'm so excited. I hope everyone is just as excited as I am. Okay, good. That is our 30-second video that we are running on WFMZ. So, just as a reminder to everyone that school starts on Monday, August 25th. So, those, I'm going to conclude my remarks for this segment of the meeting, so thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Dr. Burks. At this time, we are only taking public comments on agenda items? Okay, thank you. Please also be informed that the school board of directors appreciate public comment. However, we are not able to respond to these comments. Administration will address your concerns and update the board on the status of your concerns. We have seven action items on the finance agenda this evening. The first four action items will be presented by Mr. Cuff. Mr. Cuff is requesting approval for the school board of directors of the final local audit report for the 2023-2024 fiscal year.
Okay. Good evening, Dr. Burks and board directors. Tonight, we are seeking approval for our final audit for the 23-24 school year.
May I have a motion to move these items forward?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, this moves forward to our next board meeting right after this.
Okay, thank you very much. We are requesting approval for our 2025-26 depositories, which are First Trust Bank, Wells Fargo, M&amp;T Bank Wilmington Trust, Pennsylvania Liquid Government Investment Trust, which is better known as PLIGET, and the Pennsylvania School District Liquid Asset Fund, which is known as PSD LAF.
Any questions? May I have a motion to move this item forward to the August 21st?
Second.
Any opposed? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Does it always have it?
Thank you. Hey, we're seeking approval from the school board of directors to authorize Fox Rothschild to enter into an agreement for the property located at 515 Business Park Lane in the city of Allentown and further identify it as parcel number 6408-502-45833, and selling the assessment of the property for the tax year, at the property for $301,200 for the tax year 2025, and $289,000 for the tax year 2026, and for each subsequent tax year until a change in the property's assessment pursuant to the applicable law.
May I have a motion to move these two action items forward to our August 21st?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? The ayes have it, we'll move forward to the next meeting.
Thank you. We have one more tax assessment settlement. Seeking approval from the school board of directors to authorize Fox Rothschild to enter to an agreement for the property located at 442 West Union Street in the city of Allentown and further identify it as parcel ID 6406-299-48917, selling the assessment of the property at $13,778,000 for the tax year 2025, and $13,091,000 for the tax year 2026, and for each subsequent tax year until a change in the property's assessment pursuant to applicable law.
Any questions? May I have a motion to move this item forward to our August 21st meeting?
I make that motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 The ayes have it, this item moves forward to our meeting tonight. For the fifth action item, we are calling Ms. Monley. Ms. Monley is requesting approval for the school board of directors for the contract with FCI, the Language Experts for Translation and Interpretation Services.
Good evening, Dr. Burks and school board directors. The district requests the board's approval to contract with FCI, the Language Experts, to provide professional translation and interpretation services for the Allentown School District and the amount not to exceed $85,000 for a one-year period. The Allentown School District serves an ethnically and linguistically diverse community with students representing over 43 countries and families speaking nearly 30 different languages. By securing this contract, we aim to break language barriers, enhance meaningful communication, comply with both state and federal law, and ensure equitable access to information regarding students' education, school events, district policies, and available resources. FCI will deliver a comprehensive range of language services, including both written, spoken, and signed interpretation, as well as document translation, including telephonic and in-person and video interpretation. These supports will allow our parents and guardians whose first language is not English to be able to better communicate with our staff. The request also aligns with the district strategic plan, priority four, empowering families and strengthening partnerships. And specifically, goal one, it seeks to cultivate communication and expand opportunities for collaboration. The cost associated with this contract is fee for service, and it's based on demand and need. After securing nine different quotes, FCI was selected based on cost effectiveness, breadth of services, turnaround time, and customer service. Thank you.
Any discussion? May I have a motion to move this action item forward to our August 21st regular board meeting?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? The ayes have it, this moves forward to our tonight's board meeting. For the sixth action item, Dr. Wardenby is requesting approval from the school board of directors of singer food service equipment to provide a new walk-in freezer for child nutrition services.
Good evening, school board. Good evening, Dr. Burks.
Good evening.
This one doesn't warrant a joke about milk, but it is a freezer, so we don't want to freeze the milk. There's a little correlation there. So, we ran, Ms. Gina has to run proposals for a lot of her capital equipment as per federal regulations. So, we ran a bid to solicit services, to solicit the procurement of a walk-in freezer. So, with that said, the walk-in freezer bid came in at $56,131.27, and it's going to augment our current freezers and allow us for expansion and room to put our food in for our kids. So, that's really it, thank you.
Any discussion on this matter? May I have a motion to move this item forward to our August 24 regular board meeting?
I make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? The ayes have it, this moves forward. For our last action item, Dr. Wardenby is requesting approval from the board of directors for the STA drivers.
Thank you. On an annual basis, the state makes us approve anybody who drives a school district vehicle. So, it could be all the way from our maintenance staff to school bus drivers. This is directly related to school bus drivers. So, in your document, you have about three pages of, actually quite little more than three pages, of people who are going to be driving our students, and we have to approve them. There's obviously no cost to this, it's just mandated by the state that you approve our drivers, or in this case, STA's drivers.
Any discussion? May I have a motion to move this forward to our tonight's board meeting?
I make that motion. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you very much, appreciate it.
The ayes have it, this moves forward. At this time, we are taking public comments on non-agenda items. Once recognized, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Please note remarks are limited to three minutes, and the microphone will be disabled at the end of the three minutes. Please also be informed, the school board of directors appreciate public comments. However, we are not able to respond to these comments. Administration will address your concerns and update the board on the status of your concern. Are there any comments on non-agenda?
Yes. William Grecki?
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Cool. My name is William Grecki. I reside at 3124 Pearl Avenue, Allentown, PA 18103. Good evening, members of the board. My name is William Grecki, as I told you. Valedictorian of class of 2022 of the school formerly known as Building 21 Allentown, currently known as Bridgeview Academy, and current educator at the Da Vinci Science Center. I would like to start by clarifying, I state these titles to give context to my person. I do not speak on behalf of the Da Vinci Science Center, but for myself. The hastily made plans for AI integration at Bridgeview Academy and the Greater ASD scares me. This is because the long-term effects of chatbots and generators on youth isn't just unknown to me, but unknown to all of us. The few studies that have been conducted and assembled by the National Library of Medicine suggest that the usage of chatbots for tutoring, counseling, and general communication could increase loneliness and depression rates in university students. If this is true of university students, how fatal could these effects be on the mental well-being of high schoolers or younger? The same studies report that the uses of chatbots could help students receive a personalized learning plan to require when a teacher isn't available to cater. On paper, this is an absolute positive, but what's preventing this from becoming a crutch that teachers rely on? At Building 21, I was lucky enough to have teachers who dedicated their time to understand my unique struggles with mathematics, my unique struggles with organization, and my unique struggles living in South Allentown. Even though my experience differed from theirs, they made an effort to empathize. I believe that to uphold this empathy, texts outlining the limitations of AI usage for tutoring, counseling, and general communication must be made clear in every curriculum that utilizes it, not just for the students of Bridgeview and the Greater ASD. utilizes it, not just for the students of Bridgeview and the Greater ASD, but for their teaching staff as well. President Trump has recently repealed an executive order put in place to safeguard businesses and people from the potential overuse of AI. It is only a matter of time until that trickles down to the ASD. If you wish to utilize these tools for the good of our youth, you must tread slowly and thoughtfully. AI has not been an educational space as long enough for anyone to become certified in it, and if we hope for teachers to become equipped to use it as soon as the fall twenty-five school year, finally print to regulations a necessity. You cannot teach others to think for themselves using these tools if you, as the educator, do not think for yourself. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Amarilis Santiago.
Good evening. My name is Amarilis Santiago, and I reside at PO Box one six one four in Wilkes-Barre, Pennsylvania. And this evening, I'd like to address a few things, and some methods of my communication have been ignored, so I made the over an hour trip to come here this evening so that I can be heard. I am here this evening first to recognize the positive strides being made in curriculum development, facility improvements, and extracurricular programs. I am a proud educator. I'm also qualified as an administrator and a superintendent by the Pennsylvania State Board of Education. Unfortunately, today, I'm here to ring a five alarm bell. The Allentown School District is grappling with a runaway dumpster fire, and only the Pennsylvania Department of Education has the power to extinguish the flames of deceit and leadership misuse. The ASD's customer service and human resource practices are severely lacking. Applicants, community members are not afforded the respect they deserve, and the integrity of the hiring process is in serious question. Unfortunately, last month, an ASD cabinet member's casual remark on a state forum about a candidate being just a person that filled a vacancy starkly illustrates this case. Reliance on external staff underscores a retention crisis rooted in inadequate support and compensation. A highly qualified special ed teacher resigned after facing unjust ridicule for raising crucial concerns about students receiving special ed services. This coupled with a hostile work environment and mishandling of personnel issues reveals glaring disparities. We must demand accountability for the mental anguish on the individuals who boldly say, "No more to moral injustice, no more to those who turn a blind eye, no more to unnecessary consultants, and no more to inflated leadership structure." The ASD possesses employees sacrificing their livelihoods, even when retention bonuses are offered, a testament of their integrity over financial gain has to be recognized. I strongly urge the Pennsylvania Department of Education to take immediate action and investigate what is happening behind the scenes. It is critical to dismantle the current leadership and replace it with competent professionals dedicated to a fresh start, and then we can advocate for an equitable education system that addresses our community's needs with trust, respect, transparency, and the hiring process. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Thank you. Is there any old business to come before the Board? Any new business? May I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
I make that motion. Second.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned, thank you.
I'd like to call to order the Policy Committee of the whole meeting of the Board of Directors of the School District for the City of Allentown. Do we have any comments? Okay. Dr. Burks, do you have any remarks?
Thank you, Mr. Nikolov. As we, as an organization, we're continuing to great, make great progress in reviewing our policies, so I want to again commend the Board and all of my team who've been working very diligently to update our policies, as well as I have to commend our students and our families who also enlist their thinking, as well as the staff in the district, to implement, to have influence on policies that we establish as the district. And I guess we've exceeded our goals this year, Mr. Nikolov, so thank you for your leadership, and we have, I think we're up at twenty-six percent of the goals that we set to pass. We had a twenty percent target, and we've exceeded it by twenty-six percent, so I want to thank you. So tonight, we have a few policies, and we'll defer back to you, so thank you.
Thank you. And it's a team effort, for sure, to get these done. Tonight, we have four policies to present. Dr. Savoy will be presenting our first two, Policy Two Thirty-One and Policy Two Thirty-Six.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Policy Two Three One is social events and class trips. In this policy, there were minor content revisions, for clarity. The first one is, in the second paragraph under authority, "Class trips and social events that take place outside of the school facilities require approval by the superintendent or designated. Class trips and social events that take place overnight require the approval of School Board Directors. Further down, volunteers and students," that was the addition, "social events are subject to Board policy and administrative regulations governing volunteers."
Any objection to just wrapping these two together? Want to move on to Two Thirty-Six?
Policy Two Thirty-Six is the student assistance process, the student assistance program. The student assistance program, which we call SAD, is a systematic process using effective and accountable professional techniques to mobilize school resources to remove barriers to learning, and when the, when the problem is beyond the scope of the school, to assist the parent guardian, or take parent or guardian, and student with information so they may access services within the community. There were no changes to this policy.
Any questions or discussion?
No.
May I have a motion to move this forward to our regular board meeting?
I make that motion. I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll move that one forward. Dr. Savoy, you have another one tonight, would you like to just do that one?
Yes, thank you. The next policy is hazing, which is Policy Two Four Seven. This policy has significant changes. The first change is that the policy was expanded, the policy expanded the reporting statement to encourage students who believe others have been subjected to hazing to report such incidents. It also, we also added language directing staff to, to report the student to the threat assessment team in cases where the behavior of a student indicates a threat to the safety of the student, other students, school employees, school facilities, the community, or others in compliance with the school code and consistent with Board Policy Two Three Six Point One. We replaced language on district administrators and building principals conducting investigations into hazing and recommending administrators appropriate discipline with more clearly defined compliant procedures and processes addressing provisions for reporting and proper handling of the reports. Another revision was that we updated the language to include that notification made by the district need to include rules, penalties, and violations, and the program established by the district for enforcement of the policy based on law. There was another addition, revision to the policy, we added language stating that all stakeholders that are responsible for children, whether they're coaches, all sponsors, volunteers, staff, any staff with an activity or, or organization within the Allentown School District are expected to read and abide by the policy's procedures and codes of conduct based on statute. Lastly, we added safe harbor provisions based on the statute regarding the immunity of individuals who are reporting hazing.
Any questions or discussion for this one? May I have a motion to move this forward to our regular board meeting?
Somewhat. Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll move that forward. Thank you, Dr. Savoy. Next up, we have Policy Two Four Six. Ms. Gina will be presenting that.
Good evening, Dr. Burks and School Board members. Tonight, we are bringing forth changes to the school wellness policy, number Two Forty-Six, with just some minor changes recommended by PSBA. Language in the, in the beginning, talking about adopting the policy of recommendations of the committee, oversight of the committee, being compliant with everything that's in the policy. Then there is some sections that, if you scroll down, that are regarding student health issues that the Wellness Committee will serve as an advisory to the superintendent and be responsible for developing and periodically reviewing the school wellness policy, which is required by our Wellness Committee every three years, and we just completed an assessment that is posted already on our school website. And then, some final things under school-based activities, requiring that other foods and beverages that are more health-conscious be offered at outside sponsored events such as athletics and dances. Any questions?
Just for the, sorry, go ahead.
I just want to, Ms. Gina, Gina, I want to thank you very much for the back-to-school bash you rolled out of all of our new foods that we're going to be serving our students. They loved it, thank you very much, and, and it's been a long time since AST has done anything with, with our finances and as far as food nutrition goes, and you're actually making it so that it's no longer bleeding, but it's moving forward, and even with the after-school things that you do, our students are getting a snack or a meal when, you know, because they, they ate at what, at ten-thirty? They had breakfast and they had lunch at ten-thirty, eleven-thirty, twelve o'clock, and then they are there after school doing things until five, twelve o'clock, and they're not getting meals, so thank you very much for making sure that happens for our students.
Thank you.
I was going to call attention to the food there as well, as an indicator, so. Any other questions or comments? May I have a motion to move this forward to our regular board meeting?
Somewhat. Second.
All in favor, please, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Move that forward. Do we have any comments on non-agenda items? All right, any old business? New business? Have a motion to adjourn?
Somewhat.
All in favor, please let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Education Committee of the whole meeting of the Board of Directors of the School District for the City of Allentown for today, August twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five. The Board welcomes and invites public comment. You may address the Board on agenda and/or non-agenda items. The first opportunity for comment is at the beginning of the meeting and is limited to agenda items only. Comment cards must be received by the start of the meeting, which is now. We will not be receiving public com, public cards once the meeting begins. A copy of the public comment policy is located on the table next to the comment cards. Per our Board, our Board's policy, any person may address the Board in accordance with the procedures and limitation of this policy, either on issues presented and resolutions being considered, or on other matters affecting the administration, management, or operation of the district. Remarks of a personnel nature directed against any individual will be ruled out of order. If you choose to address the Board, please fill out a comment card and hand it to Board Secretary Mr. Simonsen. Comment cards are located at the podium near the door. Once recognized, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. And now for the superintendent remarks.
I don't have any remarks right now, believe it or not.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any requests to address the Board on agenda items? At this time, we are only taking public comments on agenda, this one, right, okay. Tonight, we have two agenda items. The first item is being presented by Dr. Savoy. Dr. Savoy is representing approval, is requesting approval for the School Board of Directors to renew the contract with Imagine Learning to provide five, K to five digital content for the district's virtual learning program.
Thank you. Good evening again. The Allentown School District is asking the Board to approve Imagine Learning. It is the K through five kindergarten through fifth grade virtual learning platform for the virtual campus. In previous months, I believe it was last month or the month before, you approved the Pearson for grades six through twelve. This accompanies that. This is a different program more geared to the younger learners. The cost will not exceed forty-nine thousand five hundred dollars for the year. This is the renewal of the contract that we had last year, so it's not new programming.
Are there any questions? May I have a motion to move these items forward to the?
Motion. A second.
The second item is a request for approv- All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Sorry, move it quick. The second item is a request for approval of the non-public contracts with intermediate unit twenty and twenty twenty-one, and twenty-one, presented by Ms. Cantor.
Hi, good evening, School Board of Directors and Dr. Burks. In accordance with the Every Student Succeeds Act, we are asking for approval to contract with IU twenty and IU twenty-one to provide the required equitable services to our identified non-public students who reside within the Allentown School District but attend non-public schools.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? May I have a motion to move this item forward?
Make that motion. A second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. At this time, we are taking public comments on non-agenda items. Once recognized, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Please note remarks are limited to three minutes, and the microphone will be disabled at the end of three minutes. Please also be informed, the Board, School Board of Directors appreciates public comment. However, we are not able to respond to these comments. Administration will address your concerns and update the Board on the status of your concern. Are there any comments?
No.
Is there any old business to come before the Board? Any new business? May I have a motion to adjourn?
I make that motion.
And there's a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, this meeting is adjourned.
I'd like to call to order the Building Committee of the whole meeting of the Board of Directors of the School District for the City of Allentown today, August twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five. The Board welcomes and invites public comment. You may address the Board on agenda and non-agenda items. The first opportunity for comment is at the beginning of the meeting and is limited to agenda items only. Comment cards must be received before the meeting, which is now. We will not be receiving public cards once the meeting has begun. A copy of the comment policy is located on the table next to the comment card. Per our Board's policy, any, any person may address the Board in accordance with the procedures and limitations of the policy, either on issues presented and resolution being considered, or on other matters affecting the administration, management, or operation of the district. Remarks of a personal manner, nature, directed against any individual will be ruled out of order. If you choose to address the Board, please fill out a card. Is there any comment card? Okay. Superintendent remarks?
Thank you, Ms. Harris. Tonight, we are very excited to share the latest architectural plans for the highly anticipated new K eight school on the east side of Allentown! We've had extensive community, as well as educator input, and student input as well as to how our new school design should look. I'm really excited, our friends are here from Site Logic, as well as from Breslin Architects, and they will present to the School Board of Directors, as well as the public, where we are in the process. And please note, as we continue throughout this process to building this new state-of-art facility, we will have, on our website, a location on the website, so we can, everyone can look and see where we are in the process. And so, as we know, communication is key, so we will continue to update you, as well as if you have questions, there will be an email address on our site, so that you can send us questions, so we can answer, so you don't make them up, you can just ask us, and we will tell you the information. Okay? So, is Mr. Steve coming? So, is Mr. Steve coming? Dr. Whartonby, who's coming to present? Okay, come on, let's give our friend, Mr. Steve, a round of applause.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Dr. Burks, thank you, Board members, and this evening, we are indeed very excited to bring to you the next stage of, of the design of, of the K to eight building. So, and, and with me this evening is Mr. Pickens from SiteLogic, Instruction Manager. And, so, first, I'll turn it over to Dr. Whartonby to give us a little bit of background on the vision and strategic alignment for the project.
So, for the last two and a half years, everything that we do at the district is aligned with the various strategic goals that Dr. Burks has challenged us with. And it's a very, it, it's, it's unique in a standpoint that, you know, such vision can transfer into a plan, into drawings, into vision for a school that's going to be with us for the next thirty to fifty years. So, with that said, you know, we're trying to make-
Fifty, sorry. Two hundred, yeah, two hundred years at this one, which is good.
Oh, well, hundred and forty-one, at least a hundred and forty-one. So, what's, what's great about this, you know, this whole mindset of having a K through eight school is because of that vision. It's because, how can we get a student from kindergarten to go to eighth grade and create that continuity? This plan, this school, will allow us to create that continuity with that student. They will be ready for ninth grade. They will have a theme in mind, a, a pathway, if you will, that will allow them to go into high school and continue that pathway. So, this is really good, I really enjoy it. So, the strategic alignments that are with this are priority number two, safety and development of the whole child. I mean, by, there's nothing more than a school that promotes safety and whole child development, creating a pathway for tomorrow. By virtue of being a K through, K through eight, we are creating that pathway. Priority number four, empowering families and strengthening partnerships. This design is not only a school, it's going to be, have a community feel to it. There is going to be amenities such as the gymnasium, the auditorium, some other spaces that Steve is going to talk about, that are going to lend themselves to being part of the community, to being a fabric of the community. And then there's a priority number seven, technology for universal learning. Dr. Burks continuously challenges us to be innovative. We do believe that this school will allow us to be innovative now and in the future. And the benefits of a K through eight campus, sense of belonging, again, the word continuity, the smooth transition to theme-based high school, mention that, provides access to innovative learning, that is where our mantra is now for all that we do with the school district, and supports the vision, mission, and strategic plan. I started with the strategic plan, I end with the strategic plan, because these plans, what you're going to see before you, are a clear representation of you are the light. So, thank you very much, Steve, please.
One of the items that we brought before you before at the schematic design level was Act 34, and that is the legal constraints with, within which we work with the, the limit of the cost of the school. So, this, this slide remains in the deck just to make it clear that we are monitoring that at each stage of, of, of the game, of the phases of, of design. It's, it's very critical that we do so. And, just drawing your attention to the bottom line, so to speak, there with the bullet point at the end, is that we do have up to a one and a half million dollar buffer now below that, that Act 34 limit, that, that's within the, the range, the cost range that Mr. Pickens will be introducing later. Key highlights of the Northridge site, it's, it's, it's hard to overstate the, the unique opportunity that finding sixteen, sixteen point seven acres in the city of Allentown presents to us, so very, very excited about that. The access to public transit, the walkable campus layout that you'll see, just the idea of creating space for future growth, future expansion of the building, having a multi-sport athletic field adjacent to the building, the, the, the clean environmental assessment that was received, and then it, its location in the heart of, of the community for proximity to neighborhood services and access, you know, enhancing the community accessibility and support. It, it, it's really a fantastic opportunity. So, as, as we look at the site plan and, and zoom in on it a little bit, this is an opportunity to show some of those site amenities that, that Dr. Whartonby is referring to. There is that, that adjacent multi-sport field that, that I, I mentioned, that's a synthetic turf, so it's, it's set up to, to accommodate a variety of, of, of hard use. The, the building itself is, it has the classroom wings, the learning communities, the elementary school at the, at the north end or the lower side of the slide, the, the six to eight learning community at the upper end, that's combined and, and, and bound by the shared use facility that, that connects them. And there's the opportunity for a safe separation between the bus traffic approaching the building, the car traffic approaching the building. Ample parking, a hundred and sixty-four parking spaces on the site, many schools in our community have that. And this, and between the wings, and we'll look at some views of this in a moment, is, is an academic courtyard that will be a, a safe, secure outside place to, to provide not only fitness and wellness, but also learning opportunities for students. So, this is a view of the, the main entrance of the building as it might be seen in the evening. We imagine this is when community use would occur. It's, it's illuminated, as you can see, through a lot of glass in, in the facade. The, the landmark tower there that houses the main staircase will be visible, that'll at, at night, by virtue of being illuminated, it'll be a civic point of reference within the community. If we look at the main entrance during daylight hours, you can see the, the welcoming canopy that, that covers and, and leads students and families to the, to the main entrance of the building. Large planters there in the foreground present sort of an urban oasis feel to the entrance area of the building. On the, on the western facade, so just around the corner from the, the main entrance is, is the, the west side that highlights the, this long elevation is punctuated by some secondary entrances which lead into the performing arts area of the building, the athletic area of the building. Again, an opportunity to, to provide a civic presence along which the Northridge Drive, which is in the foreground, that's a walking and biking path that works its way up the There we go. If we move into the interior of, of the site a little further, this is the courtyard that I spoke about a moment ago. In, in the foreground is a walking path, that's exactly one-eighth of a mile in length to encourage wellness and outdoor activity. Inbound, inside of that track is a multipurpose recreation and fitness field that's within that. In the background there, you see the library, the innovation labs on the, on the right-hand side. We'll have a close-up of that in a moment. And then if we come full circle back to the entrance of the building, this is actually the, the Hanover Avenue entrance, the, the campus presence of, of, of the school. And I'll just remind you that the reason for the wall and the fence there is that the athletic field is actually elevated above sidewalk because it has to form a plateau, but that wall does give us the opportunity for some signage that would, that leads people to the covered canopy entrance of the site. This is really where, where guests and visitors and public transit drop-off is, and this would be the entrance to the, to the campus from that, that vantage point, really giving a, 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 a grand, almost suburban approach to the building that would really, is really And then if we move inside the building, this is stepping right inside the front doors of the main entrance into the, into the lobby area. We see, as, as we step up there into the heart of the building, what we've been calling Main Street, which is the spine that, that organizes and connects the various elements of the building, we see the opportunity to introduce some technology and learning outside the classroom into these areas. And then if we move a little further up into the plan, into Main Street, this is, on the right-hand side is the entrance to the gymnasium and auditorium, it's a combined multipurpose space. On the left-hand side are the innovation labs. The first one is a, is a, is a food lab, and then the next one is, is seen as a fitness wellness lab. And then beyond that is the library. This is stepping inside the library, a very dramatic, engaging space with floor-to-ceiling glass that looks out on the courtyard. And then on the right-hand side there are some technology-rich instructional spaces and meeting spaces that will really be popular as, as an amenity to the library and the overall school. This is an exterior view, looking from the courtyard back at the library, you can see the generous overhang that will create space for outdoor activities, for learning, for gathering, for reading, very, very exciting to envision what will happen there. And then, just to the right beyond the library, the innovation labs, outside of those, we can envision community gardens or something along those lines happening in the courtyard space. And every, every classroom in the building has multiple windows, and, and, and half of those classrooms from two wings look into the courtyard and the other, the others out. So, lots of, lots of views, natural light finding its way in. Here's a, here's an enlargement of that, that seating area with the potential for some garden space. This is the site plan here, which again, was, was viewed earlier, but as a reminder, that's that, that academic courtyard that we saw in the earlier view. Zooming in a bit on the athletic field, so this is along Hanover Avenue as the angled street along the left-hand side of the slide. Northridge Boulevard is at the bottom of the slide, it's a tree-lined promenade heading up, up the hill. And then, and then in that corner then, is the campus entrance accessible from public transit, walk, walkable communities on the east side into the campus proper. There's facilities for football, soccer, baseball, a, a, a level area for potential portable bleachers, and a, and then a walkway that leads you back into the site towards, towards the school proper.
Dr. Whartonby, let's go back to that, go back to the last slide. As you know, I'm going to ask. Football, baseball, is their delineation, do they cost?
They obviously do with this one. This is a unique layout where it has multiple sports halls.
Okay.
During the spring, you can have baseball. During the fall, it's a walk, or you can have football and soccer. There's three fields in the park. You can also have-
Okay, okay, thank you.
You're concerned about running and more active.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so this is the floor plan of the building, the main, the main floor elevation. Again, you can see that arrangement of spaces that I've begun, begun to unpack with the shared use facilities on the right-hand side of the screen, the, the administration area, the elementary, middle school gymnasium, the combined multipurpose room, the dining hall with its full glass windows at the top of the plan there on the right-hand side, and then the two academic wings on either side of the courtyard with the innovation labs and the library in between. So, I also want to just take a moment to show you a, a, a few typical plans that we've been working on. So, over the past few months, we've been meeting diligently with multiple stakeholders when we, between faculty and staff and administrators and even community partners, we counted up seventy-two individuals that have been participants in these meetings, and there's nearly fifty drawings such as you see here that, that have been carefully evaluated for their, their performance and their support of state-of-the-art learning. And so, that's, that's what we're seeing here. So, this is an example, this, this is enlargement of the innovation labs and the library. The food lab is on the, on the left-hand side. This is not your grandmother's home ec space, so to speak, this think more like food network.
That's just talking about mine.
And next to that is a, is a fitness instruction space, and these are, these are both large, large spaces, oversized classroom areas, and then to, on the right-hand side is the, is the library. So, in conjunction, these are three spaces that really marry diet and exercise and learning, and they're on the main street of, of the, of the building, making them accessible for both school and community use.
Before we move on, since we're on this slide, for the library being next to those areas, is it going to be well insulated for noise to ensure that students studying there will be peaceful?
Yes.
And also, I was, wasn't sure you had it laid out yet, but for the furniture, do we have plans for comfy chairs? I'm sure any student could tell you that it's easier to study when you're comfortable?
Yes.
And I've been in libraries that are decidedly not, so.
Sure, sure, great, great question, thank you, sir. Yes, as you can see on these plans, you'll see furniture elements, you'll see for equipment, and, and in the case of the fitness lab, there's some of the cardio equipment that's being shown. And, and even, you know, guided read, guided reading tables, where's the teacher touchdown area? Some of the, some of the classrooms have electric style for more active instruction and learning. So, all of that is part of this, as well as how is the technology being integrated into the spaces? If, in, in the, in the, in the fab lab, there's opportunities for 3D printers, we need to provide that infrastructure. And the science rooms, where's the, the, the power and the water coming from to, to serve the instruction? So, all of that gets, gets looked at in detail with the users of, of these potential spaces at this stage of the design.
And Nick, to answer your question, what we did with Hayes Elementary School, there are some of us on the board who will be with the interior designer to pick out everything. So, you'll be able to pick out the furniture, you'll be able to pick out the floors, you'll be able to pick out the walls, whatever, whatever we want, that's what, you know, interior, the interior designer, who's a great, one lovely lady that works for Breslin who helps her.
Perfect, thank you.
So, to answer your question directly visually, on this plan, the upper right corner there of, of the library, that is a soft seating area, a, a, a reading area. Within the K to eight facility, we're having to accommodate through, through a proper space, proper furniture, a, a, a variety of age of learner instruction, so that's, that's what these plans are, are indicating. If we look at the next one, this is the, across from the library, across Main Street from the library, is the performing arts area. Again, something that got considerable attention through this, through the, in fact, relevant to some of the partnerships that the district is exploring for, for the building. We have the band, the choral, the dance studios here shown, and, and their support spaces, practice areas, changing rooms, storage, all those, all those things that are necessary for those, for those to function well. And again, you see a layout, so how, how would the choral room be laid out? How would the band and the orchestra use the space? All of those layouts are indicated to make sure that the spaces will function well, where's the instrument storage? How are the acoustics being handled, that sort of thing? This is the multipurpose room, which is a, which is- This is the multipurpose room, which is a, which is sort of nicknamed a gymatorium. It's a gymnasium and an auditorium, but it's a very high-level gymnasium. We're sort of leaning towards that auditorium function as much as we can. You see it has a full stage that is appropriate for middle school theater. And there's bleachers on the one side of the full-court gymnasium. Well, as, when it's in a performing arts function, those bleachers will extend about two-thirds of the way across the gym floor towards the proscenium opening to provide proper sightlines and views of the stage that performs well acoustically and from a lighting standpoint and an experiential standpoint like an auditorium.
One moment, quick question. Is that an orchestra pit right there at the top?
Yeah, well, that's the stage, right. You're saying the stage. Yep, yep. So that is a, there's, again, through talking with the choral, with the drama, with the performing arts, we have the stage functions, the rigging, the lighting, so forth for that. But yes, as you can see, there's enough seating to put lots of students who would be participating in these activities on the stage.
Did you have a question?
Is it constructed similar to Hayes Elementary? Where it's kind of like you can convert it from a gym to?
Yes, yes. It's similar, but more middle school-appropriate. If you think of Hayes, the stage is on the end of the room.
Right.
Right, so view lines from the very back would be less than ideal for a middle school drama activity. But yes, you know, if you've been in there, there's two systems of lighting that work differently independently, depending on the use of the space. This will actually take that to the next level for appropriate for middle school.
Okay.
Yes, thanks. Okay, so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Pickens to talk about schedule and budget.
Before you leave, Steve, because we did visit some schools in Philadelphia. I was very disappointed with, I was very disappointed in the design. Are there going to be, I'm going to ask you, are there going to be any white walls in our school district? I mean, in that building?
Very few. So I think what you're referring to is gypsum board metal set, yeah. So this is intended to be a little bit more durable than what you saw in those examples. So there's not unprotected drywall down near the floor. Again, you know, every building has different requirements in terms of its design. So I'm not sure what the requirements were there. But in our case, we're going to have more ground face block and glazed wall tile and those sorts of materials that really stand up to the rigorous use appropriate to a building of this.
And the reason why I ask that, because I did see a school, two schools in Philadelphia. And these schools were only a couple of years old and they looked bad and dingy because the walls were white. They looked worn out. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you and good evening. So at this point, I think I'm here tonight to help explain how maybe this dream that we're seeing from Stephen's team, who did a wonderful job, could become a reality. So this is the path. So right now, as we are through August 21st, the project's schedule overall has two critical paths on it. The critical path that we're following currently is the land development phase. So when I say that, there's a private entity that's involved and there's a public entity involved. So there's a private developer who is participating in the current land development process, which then allows our team from SiteLogic to show up at the job site once those permits are all validated and approved. So with that, we're anticipating that the land development process is complete to the point where the developer could start the job site tentatively through the month, next month, through September 2025. And the hope there is that through the winter, depending on the winter, we could actually get to the point where the work that you're seeing under, I'm reading as I'm talking, through the next section, through the bidding phase, March and then April of 2026, would be eventually when our team would show up on the building pad and actually construct. So in between that critical stage of land development, there's a couple of other steps. One of those we've previously talked about, which is the Act 34 phase. One of the requirements that's necessary for the Act 34 is the design document estimate. So that estimate had been produced. That in turn allowed for the Act 34 process to kick off. So where we stand right now in the design is we, there's a couple of phases to the design and we are just beyond the design document phase and into the construction document phase, which is exactly where we need to be in order to achieve starting in April. So with the Act 34 process complete and with the bidding that's associated with these construction documents where we're at today, our team will put together one last estimate in a few months. That estimate should and hopefully will compare very positively to how we intend to see the bids come in on bid day. So again, it's a public bid. Our company is not performing the work. We are a construction manager. I only say that because it's not a private bid, it's a public bid. So we'll get as many bid participation, participants as we can for each individual phase of the work in the vicinity, in the community, to allow us to be competitive, have a successful bid opening, and with the board's approval, be able to begin the project. If it does begin with the winner that we're talking about in April of 2026, then the intent would then to be, as it shows, to be complete by November of 2027. Any questions on schedule before I roll to cost?
Yeah.
All right. So as I mentioned, through the design document phase, we still have one more estimate to do closer to bid day. Just to remind you, we had no choice really other than just to show a range of costs because that's just what makes sense right now. It's too early. And if anybody's listening to what's happening in the news, there's quite a challenge for our team to, you know, really better, to positively and accurately understand what's going on with material costs and equipment and such. So with that, we indicated with the DD estimate square footage that's indicated, there are a low range of $126 million and a high range of $132,550. So the other information that we're providing here gives you a little bit more of an idea of what to expect for the packages of work. These are the companies that would show up and actually perform the work. So down below there, you can see the general contractor, the HVAC contractor, electrical, plumbing, fire protection. And one of the opportunities we have at this point with the district is to kind of weigh in on whether or not we want to add additional packages as we see fit with the economy and what is coming down the road with material escalation and pricing. The second group of numbers that you see there are the soft costs. Those are the costs that you don't see on the construction site. These are the costs for the Resland team, for the SiteLogic team, for all the permitting, all the land acquisition, everything we have shown there. But I point you to the contingency with the two asterisks next to it. We just, we don't have an idea. I'm sorry, I don't think anybody has an idea of what is to come with the tariffs. So all we can do right now is just plug in a positive percentage that we feel would cover something like the cost of steel at 4%. Not the labor, not the subcontractors, not the work. This is the material that's being purchased. So the 4% is a tariff fee on the material cost. Sometimes, the reason I bring that up is sometimes people might look at that as 4% on top of the overall construction costs and that becomes a little much to carry. But it's 4% on the construction material that could be at risk through the tariff. And of course, if this does not happen, then that 4% on bid day does not amount to anything. So we just don't know unfortunately at this time. But one of the things that we do is we keep a close ear and a close eye to what's going on in the community. Any questions?
Yes. Okay, like Brigadier Hayes Elementary School, we have a great open lobby with the compass in the middle. Are we going to do anything like that in this school?
Yes, that's our intent. So yes, the images that we showed of the lobby, this will even be bigger. It's a bigger school. And then those, you know, I mentioned learning outside the classroom. Might not literally be a compass in the floor this time, but we always want to look for opportunities to utilize the whole building for instruction, for teaching, for creative ways to engage students with the built environment. And so, yeah, we will, you know, we have some ideas for that. Some of them were depicted in the renderings. Some will continue to develop as we move forward with the design.
Okay, the library, it's a media center, correct?
Yep.
Okay, and it's for K through 8? It's just one library for all the whole, okay, for the whole academy? Okay, and Dr. Whartonby, there is a lot of landscaping, a whole bunch. Are we going to have people for that?
Yes. So we do have a grounds crew.
Okay.
We do have a grounds crew, but we also have a vendor, Clayce, who does a lot of our grass cutting. He has the larger equipment that we can't have.
All right, thank you.
And maybe a couple sheep.
Okay, and then back to you, Steve. I came in last week on one of my due drop-ins just to see the superintendent and talk to everyone. And I did get to see the building and I did come in after our meeting. We received, I call it the big book. And if, you know, once, because now it has been presented to the board, I would like the board members to have that big book as well. He knows what it is.
Certainly, yes. So what you're seeing tonight is a selected, sort of curated sample of the big book, which is getting to be quite big. I hope you don't ask for it with construction documents.
No, no, no. I just want, I just want what I have.
Yes, certainly.
Thank you.
I have one question. So kind of going back to that slide with the glass, I call it, I'm just calling it in my head, like the glass room. You know, safety top priority. So I'm kind of thinking of like a worst-case scenario type of situation. With those glass rooms, I'll wait till we get to it. Or we can even say that one as well. It was a different one, but same with that one. I'm thinking of like drills, like an intruder drill. Is there any like safety corners that will be implemented in the project as well? Just so, you know, when you have elementary, middle school students, it's going to take a little more time than the high schoolers to get to a safe location. So I just wanted to see if that was implemented as well.
Yes, we think about that a lot. And one of our meetings was actually with ASD Security as well as Allentown Police to review the plans. And yes, our, part of the design consideration for that is in, particularly in the classrooms where the students are spending the majority of their time, there's always that blind corner where you can quickly retreat to. In some of the more signature spaces like the library, it's a little bit harder to do that. But we still think about, and there will be opportunities for drills to say, okay, even in the library, where can we go to sort of turn out the lights and be less visible? But because those are more itinerant spaces, students aren't necessarily there for, obviously, their entire day or longer. So each space gets its own look from that safety and security standpoint. Also, a lot of folks ask about glazing, you know, and we strategically, it's not usually part of the public presentation for obvious reasons, but we identify where the ballistic rate of glazing is versus laminated glazing versus tempered glazing. And so the challenge is to design a building that for everyday use is a beautiful, inviting, naturally lit space, while at the same time thinking about those extremely rare scenarios where, you know, that we have to consider where that glass is and views around the building. So we do, we do take all that into consideration.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, can we see the building?
Absolutely. But wait, before we do that, you know, I did include a slide to just explain what design development is. A lot of times folks say, well, what are we approving tonight with this? So before we move on to the nice graphics, I just want, you've seen a lot of pictures, you've seen a lot of beautiful renderings. What's included in this design is not necessarily those final color and interior finish selections, right? Or the list of alternates in value engineering or bid packages that Mr. Pickens referred to. This is really about approving the detailed design of the major program spaces that you'll see in the presentation and the materials that have been provided beforehand. The cost that's been presented and that, the sustainability goals that with regard to the green roof and that sort of thing, and the specification of major systems. So that's what this set of documents represents. And so there will be lots of other decisions and exciting renderings to see as the design moves forward. So with that, we'll roll a digital animation of the building that is really a fly-around, if you will, and we're going to... Performing arts on the upper end, athletics on the lower side there. This is the parent drop-off separating from the buses and the food room. As we come around, we'll see the opportunity for some color on the elevation. As if we're walking right in the front door of the building and to see that lobby view that I shared a bit ago. And that's it.
All right, a big reveal. I don't know if anybody wants to go up there and see it.
So you can feel free to take a look.
Please go ahead and look at it, it's beautiful.
And then the last slide is just the memorandum that we're asking for the approval of the design development this evening at the board meeting so that we can begin the process for construction documents over the next few months to get the project ready for bidding as soon as we can. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And while we're waiting, I was always taught to give honor where honor is due. And the reason for this school, one person really kept it going, especially when I got on the school district 2017, Robert Smith. He always wanted something for the east side because, you know, we knew. He made it very, very important. He always wanted something for the east side, because, you know, we, we knew, he made it very, very important that we, as a school district, build a new school. And I have to give that to him. When he was, you know, didn't get elected for the board, then Nicholas, Nicholas Miller and I continued that. And I thank God for our superintendent, who made sure, and all of her team, that are making sure that, you know, this is now being built. It's really close to all of our hearts, because the east side has been lacking, but now it's gonna get what it deserves.
Let's give everyone a round of applause. I just want to commend, of course, everyone for their hard work in this effort, as Ms. Phoebe mentioned. And I want to thank our friends at SiteLogic, as well as Breslin, because we have had many meetings. And I want to, of course, thank Dr. Wharton B. and all my interim CFOs. We've had lots of meetings about this project, and I have to commend them, because they were very responsive, because I thought it was very important that we, as a community, we are, that we would be transparent with the community, as well as to show you a visualization of what we, our vision for tomorrow for our students. So thank you for being responsive to creating the visualizations. I know it wasn't like the initial plan to do that, but I want to thank you. And Mr. Michael, thank you for, it's like, all right, Dr. Burks, we'll see what we can do, and we can make it happen within a short period of time. So I thank you for that. And so, and I'm happy that Dr. G, I'd be remiss that Dr. Keegan is on this team, because she's a former superintendent. So it's not like they're just, and I love all the technical people and architects and contractors and everyone else, but I'm happy there's someone on this team that understands education and the importance of the facility being an educational experience for our students, and not just the building. So I want to thank this team and everyone who was involved in all the meetings about decision. And Ms. Ramos convened a lot of people in a very short order to get some input. And I'd be remiss if I didn't acknowledge my student advisory council, Mr. Simonson and Ms. Reese, they work with me on that team. And we asked them to show us their vision for a new school. And they had, they're in here with their chart paper and saying all the things they wanted for their school. And so we tried to elevate their voices in this as well. So I want to thank everyone for their hard work. And we're excited. We are on the move in Allentown, and, and I'm proud, I'm hoping that everyone else is proud about what we're doing here. A lot of districts are not building schools this magnitude of this size. And our friends at SiteLogic know they work around the state. And so people are scaling back, smaller footprints, or just saying, we just can't do it. And we've been very unapologetic about how we want our stu-, our students to have the state-of-the-art experience. So I thank you for being responsive. And they come all the way down, and a lot of times when you work with vendors, they, if they live, you know, ten seconds away, they don't want to come inside to meet, but they come all the way down from Harrisburg and across the state to make sure they meet with us often. So I thank you, and I honor you for that. Thank you.
I would like to thank, thank everyone as well, and the administration, but I also want to thank the board, because we have gone through so much to get this project off the ground. We deal with so much public ridicule, and just because we want something great and amazing for our children, and we are relentless when it comes to that. We, we'll take the pressure head-on. So I want to commend the board for continuing with this project and, and, you know, taking the vision of the administration and understanding that our students deserve the best, they, they deserve innovation. We go to some of our buildings, and our buildings are a hundred and something years old, they're so old, and they're, you know, they're falling apart. And our students deserve more than that. They real, they really do, and for them to thrive, they need to be in the best environment to do so. So I'm, I'm so thrilled that we're able to get this project off the ground, and I cannot wait till we break ground.
I want to underscore and thank the board as well, because if you don't say yes, we don't get the money. So thank you so much to get approval, we need you to say yes tonight, so thank you.
And Ms. Phoebe for showing up to every meeting. Well, this is important. And I also want to thank Paul from IBW. He's here, thank you very much, because he will be working with us to make sure everything is correct. I think that was a discussion item, so we'll go on to the next item. Dr. Wharton B.
Thank you. Bear with me a minute, I apologize. So the next item is a request for the board's approval for Allegheny Education Systems. And Alle- educate, Allegheny Education Systems, we're gonna be purchasing additional furniture for Bridgeview Academy. And it's furniture-specific, it's called Makerspace. And Ms. Phoebe, Dr. Burks, we were privy to see some of that in the couple of schools that you had mentioned, and we'll be better. So, what we're asking for is the, the board to expend fifty-eight thousand, six hundred and eighty-five dollars and eighty-seven cents for this material. It's gonna definitely augment and make Bridgeview Academy better. We're gonna be competitive, we're gonna be teaching kids how to do things beyond their dreams. And this, this amount of money is a small investment in that movement forward.
So I just walked, went past Bridgeview Academy on my way here, and I saw the new sign-up. Beautiful, it's the Charlotte Hunet colors, so, the blue and purple, very nice. So I'm, I was really impressed with that, I can't wait for the big sign.
Big sign is gonna be even more impressive.
Wonderful.
I'm working with Dr. Burks on that.
Any, just, any question? May I have a motion to bring this forward?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have, any, any opposed? Ayes have a motion carried. Dr. Wharton B. is also requesting approval for the school board of directors for the project justification and design development for the K through, new K through eighth school.
So if you guys have been through this process before, it used to be part of the PlanCon process. We talked about Act thirty-four. Act thirty-four is part and parcel of the PlanCon process. So to move ahead at each stage, as Steve was talking about, you did it in schematic design, in, back in November of last year, twenty twenty-four. Now we're asking you to do the same thing with the design development for this, what Steve just showed today. And then we'll obviously be back with the construction end of things. So it's an iterative process, it's a three-step process at minimum, but it's a process by which we have to go through to get this project approved by Pennsylvania Department of Education. So we request the board approval for the project justification and design development for the K through eight school, consistent with the Department of Education's PlanCon Part E, which is the design development requirements, and authorization to advance to PlanCon Part F, the construction, the next phase. And these approvals are critical to progressing the project, addressing the community's growing needs, and delivering modern, high-quality educational facilities for staff and students.
All right, any questions? May I have a motion to move this forward?
Make that motion, second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, it is carried.
Thank you. I just wanted to add, as we go throughout this process, and I said this a little bit before, that we will have additional public engagement. I know that my friend, Mr. Steve, said there were seventy-some odd people who are part of this process, and I mentioned the students. But as we go through this, in terms of how are we gonna name the school, and we will convene an advisory group to help influence even some of the more, more problematic aspects of the school. So if you feel like when no one asks me, well, we'll make an appeal for others in the community to be a part of this process. So I just wanted to make, that was important, that we say that publicly. Thank you.
At this time, we are taking public comments for non-agenda items.
Robert E. Smith, Jr.
Okay, ones recognized, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the, for the record. Please note remarks are limited to three minutes, as, as the microphone will be disabled at the end of three minutes.
Robert E. Smith, Jr. I live at ten sixty East Gordon Street, about a block away from this project. And after twenty-two years, I'm very happy that it's finally gonna be done. And thank you for your kind words, Madam Chairman. Just had to get rid of half my presentation today, because you're just being so nice.
I know, I'm not supposed to interrupt you, but honor is, honor is due. It's the word, it's, it's Bible.
Thank you, I'm just concerned about, this is beautiful, by the way, gentlemen, very nice, you know, very happy about this. But before we dig, we need to get rid of the dumps underneath it. There's three dumps there, and I just don't want the school district to be taken advantage of. City center's gotta fix the dumps underneath, which is cancer-causing, so that's very important before we build on this land. There's three dumps under there. Also, traffic, my neighbors are worried about the traffic that's gonna be causing the neighborhood. So we gotta, logistics are very important, but this is a beautiful project, and in twenty-two years, I'm very happy that it's finally come to rest. God, I'm very happy about that. Now, there's a new cell phone policy, I understand, with lock boxes in the district. Now, this is under building, because you had to purchase lock boxes. So when you take a cellphone and put it in a lock box, the locks box, it's not fitting into the lock box with a case. So these lock boxes that every teacher got, the cell phones are not fitting in. So just for your information on that. Also, safety, on Soto, on the Midway Manor School, Sotomayor, the new school, there's no safety signs around the school. Now, the city, we tried to go to the city Midway Manor group, the city says it's the school district problem, you know, one of those, it's their problem, this problem. So if it's the school district's problem, and the city doesn't want to do it, then the school district has to do it. There's four, there were almost four accidents the other day by cars going right through stop signs. So we need to put up safety signs on that. I'll save the other one, I'm, I'm gonna cut out a little bit. Thank you again for the nice, kind words tonight, thank you.
You're welcome. Did you have something to say? Um, I don't know, that...
There's no lock box policy.
That's not our policy. A lock box, it's not our policy.
I recently read the handbook, and that is not in our handbook, so we might want to investigate that if that's...
I don't know who put that rumor out there, but it's not for a Allentown School District.
And Mr., Dr. Wharton B., if you could just please find out where that misinformation's coming from.
I think it was rumor.
Yeah, that's not our policy.
I just want to make it clear, because...
There's no policy.
I just want to make that clear and reiterate that, that is not an Allentown School District policy, so tomorrow, we're not all over Facebook that we're locking up students' phones, because that's not the case.
All right. Is there any old business?
No.
Is there any new business? I just want to say, Justin Parker Fields, you're right there, thank you very much. He's one of our new teachers at Rob Element, I mean, Rob Middle School. Please stand, please stand, please stand, because he's Allentown born and bred. So it's one of our own, who is now, who is now one of our teachers. Thank you very much. Okay, may I have a motion to adj, adjourn?
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, motion is, is carried.
Would you guys like to take a two-minute? Okay, we'll take three minutes, and then we'll come back and have our regular board meeting. And I'm sorry. We were doing so good. I thought we were gonna be out of here by seven.
I'm ready, girl.
Okay. Okay. I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Board of Directors of the School District for the City of Allentown for today, August twenty-first, twenty twenty-five. The board welcomes and invites public comment. You may address the board on agenda and/or non-agenda items. The first opportunity for comment is at the beginning of the meeting, and is limited to agenda items only. Comment cards must be received by the start of the meeting, which is now. We will not be receiving public cards once the meeting begins. A copy of the public comment policy is located on the table next to the comment cards. Per our board's policy, any person may address the board in accordance with the procedures and limitations of this policy, either on issues presented and resolution being considered, or on other matters affecting the administration, management, or operation... management, or operation of the district. Remarks of a personal nature directed against any individual will be ruled out of order. If you choose to address the Board, please fill out a comment card and hand it to the Board's Secretary, Mr. Simonson. Comment cards are located at the podium near the door. Once recognized, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. We will now have a roll call. Mr. Secretary, please call the roll.
Ms. Brown. Ms. Conover. Ms. Harris.
Here.
Ms. Matheson. Ms. Matheson.
Looks like it's a Zoom issue because Ms. Matheson's there.
Mr. Nikolov.
Here.
Ms. Noel.
Here.
Ms. Hartnett.
Here.
Ms. Sierra.
Here.
Ms. Tiberio. We have five Board members present.
There are Board members on the Zoom that are trying to communicate. Ms. Latasha's here and Ms. Matheson's here as well. She said, she said three times, "I'm here." So you can hear in the headset, but you can't. Okay, they're fixing it. So Ms. Brown is here and Ms. Matheson's here as well.
So we have five members present, two members virtual, for a total of seven Board members.
Thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a moment of silence.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And for my short Board President remarks, I am so excited for this upcoming school year. I hope everyone is rested and ready. I am so charged up. I don't know what it is about this year, but I just feel really good and positive about the school year. I know that the administration did a lot of professional development. I know a lot of innovation happened over the summer, a lot of preparation happened over the summer. I'd also like to welcome, I think we have 200 new teachers that started in ASD, please. Welcome to the ASD family. We thank you for your yes. We thank you for what you're about to pour into our students. We truly appreciate everything that you're about to do for ASD. And I also want to thank the entire ASD team that worked at the Back to School Bash. Every year, it just gets better and better. And we have all these partners that came out and supported our students and families. We want to thank the partners. We want to thank the volunteers, the entire ASD family. Ms. Monley, for all the work that you've put in with your team. It was a phenomenal... Ms. Gina, I got so many messages about the food. I am not lying to you. It's shocking when you hear people say like, "School lunch is good." Like, you don't hear that a lot. So I'm happy that we had such a great, such a great event. And then to top it off, we had the amazing convocation this past Monday. I must say, it was my first convocation and it was phenomenal. The energy in the room, just seeing all the teachers and faculties and everyone just together and the school pride. That was it, the school pride. But I think Rob won, I'm not gonna lie. Rob was different.
Y'all was doing it.
Rob was different. They came a little different, but it was... But it was amazing, it was amazing. And thank you to the team that put it together. And special thanks to Dr. Miza Akbar, Dr. Akbar. Oh my God, she gave, she was our keynote speaker. She gave a phenomenal keynote. I think it was great because, you know, we have 77% Hispanic and Latinos in Allentown School District. So to see someone come from where she came from to be who she is right now, it was so motivational for our students, for our faculty, for our team. So thank you, Dr. Burks, wherever you found her. I know you always tap into your well of your connections, but thank you so much because it was motivational for me. Because I'm, I always talk about, I'm an immigrant from Jamaica. And when you come from that background and you're able to come to a new place and thrive and do the things that you do, like, it's amazing because it's an uphill battle. So it was great. I'm truly honored to be a part of the district. And thank you all. I am, again, I am ready and I hope everyone is ready because we are going to have a phenomenal year this year. ASD, we are on the move. And for Dr. Burks, any remarks?
Again, thank you, Madam President. And thank you to the School Board Directors and to everyone within our learning community, especially our families and students. I honor each of you and I value for you sharing your strengths and gifts with all of us. And so as a community, we are rising together for the benefits of, and as I've mentioned often, despite role, our collective responsibility is to protect the instructional core. Every aspect of this, if you're a custodian, you're a school bus driver, every leader, teacher, psychologist, social worker, every clinician, paraprofessional, nurses, when I do this, I get into trouble. But everyone who works with us is our collective responsibility ensure that we protect the instructional core and support student achievement, as well as our collective community. And I'm underscoring that because it's just extremely paramount that we work together to uplift, to uplift our students and our families in ensuring that the educational experience is rich, that it honors who they are as individuals. And that's why I wanted to really start the year off strong. We put a lot of investments with my team and I thank my team for facilitating many of the professional learning sessions. It takes a lot of work and preparation to do that. And for our leaders and teachers and every, all educators to fully embrace, as well as our operation team, the learning, because it's really about continuous improvement and collective learning. And we have not, we're not at full scale the perfect utopic organization, but continuous improvement and learning and growing. And that is one of our primary focus. We, at the, our convocation, we put forward our big rocks that we're focusing on as an organization. We elevated our strategic plan. And we are working as a team to be more mission-centric. And we have been, we are being intentional about the decisions that we're making. So everyone, despite role, each of our, and I think it's important as we go into this new school year, that each of our departments and offices, they have continuous improvement plans. So it's not just the work of just, let's have the schools do all this work. So I know as an organization, we're moving in a direction that people may not be accustomed to. We're doing some things differently. And we know that change is hard. It's hard. Everyone wants change. "I don't know why they're not doing this or why they're doing that." But don't change me and my thinking. But we're at a new place in education. And I just, this is my appeal to all of our partners. I thank the partners who are with us all the time. For the additional partners, people who may not have an official business or nonprofit, but anyone who cares about the children of Allentown and their families, I invite you to be a part of the movement that we're here having here in Allentown. And if you have questions that you don't understand why we're doing something, I invite you, I've created platforms for people to talk with me. I have real talks with Dr. Burks. So if you'd like to come and talk with us and try to understand why we're making the decision, because education is different than it was 20 years ago or even five years ago. We're in a different place. Even two years ago, when we think about where we are as it relates to AI and innovation. But I would just, this is my appeal and I implore you because I am the spokesperson for the school district. If, please help us move the district forward in a positive way. This is my appeal to everyone. And as I mentioned about change and continuous improvement, all decisions that we're making are in service to our children and the teachers, of course, and present, and presence, and the presence of content. And that's all of our roles. And so every decision that we're making is based on our strategic plan. And one of our core priorities is organizational efficiency and effectiveness. This is priority six. I think I got that right. And so priority six. And so we just want to elevate a few things that we are doing that may be different. We've embraced a new student information system this year. We have embraced a new, we're implementing a new even way that we communicate with families, ParentSquare, which is our platform for communication. As we know, this is technology. So some things may happen that people may not understand how to access the technology. People may get a little afraid. But we've created some platforms and things so that we can help you get through this process. So, Madam President, I've asked Ms. Smith, who's leading this effort with a lot of other people, to be, help me in this part of my remarks about explaining to our entire learning community and the public. So when someone says, and this is important to us, "I don't know what to do," we have some things to share with you that can help you do your work much better in support of our children and families as we roll out the new school year. So, Ms. Smith.
Thank you, Dr. Burks. Good evening, Dr. Burks and members of the Board of Directors. We are excited to begin the 2025-26 academic school year. As you know, on July 1st, we transitioned to Power School as our student information system. A change of this magnitude is never quick. It requires thoughtful planning, preparation, and persistence. I am proud to share that for more than a year, our teams have been working diligently to ensure a successful launch. Our training and support efforts began last school year with teachers receiving initial sessions in the spring. Over the summer, we offered optional professional development. And I'm proud to share that more than 200 staff members, including teachers, nurses, social workers, community school coordinators, outreach workers, and homeschool visitors, participated. This demonstrates the strong commitment of our staff. Just this week, 167 teachers were trained to serve as Power School Support ambassadors within their school teams. In addition, all teachers were provided time to deepen their Power School knowledge. And attendance clerks today received specialized training to ensure accurate reporting as we launch attendance next week. To further strengthen our support, we've also expanded office hours. The Assessment and Accountability Team offers daily sessions twice a day for access and enrollment support. To date, 270 staff members have already participated in the Assessment and Accountability Office Hours. The Learning and Teaching Team is providing office hours for scheduling, curriculum, clever, and related questions. Dedicated sessions for teachers on Power Teacher Pro are also available. Beyond this, we have a dedicated Power School email for questions and a hotline providing immediate support from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. daily. I want to take a moment to recognize many individuals who have gone above and beyond. Charlene Noggle from IT. Charlene has ensured that smooth transfer of data from Sapphire to Power School. Popeye from IT. For customizing system features to meet our district needs in Power School. Kyle Kaufman. For working diligently all spring and summer with school teams to ensure every student has a schedule. Crystal Perez. For advocating for our Nurse Suite customizations and creating clear how-to guides for our nurses. Lauren Santiana. For her leadership in ensuring all our special education data and reports are fully set and ready to go. And finally, to Michelle Bruno. Michelle is an ASD teacher at Allen High School and a true Power School champion. She has led summer training sessions for 100 teachers and developed step-by-step directions with videos for taking attendance, entering assignments in gradebooks, and today, even managing elementary lunch selections. She will also be leading the office hours for Power Teacher Pro. Thanks to their dedication and the commitment of so many others, we are well-prepared for this school year. Transportation rosters were finalized today and parents are being notified. Dry bus runs are also underway. We are ready for Monday. We are ready to greet our students. We are excited for an outstanding 2025-26 school year. We will continue to offer support to assist with this transition, ensuring that our staff, students, and families have what they need to thrive. Thank you.
And I just want to underscore, we get better together.
All our strengths are needed.
So thank you. Thank you, Madam President. I'm looking forward to a great academic year.
Yes, thank you so much. At this time, we are only taking public comments on agenda items. Once recognized, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Please note remarks are limited to three minutes and the microphone will be disabled by the end of the three minutes. Please also be informed, the School Board of Directors appreciates public comment. However, we are not able to respond to these comments. Administration will address your concerns and update the Board on the status of your concern. Any comment?
We have two comments. The first is about the new school, not necessarily the design, but we're gonna have Ms. Paulette Hunter.
Good evening. My name is Paulette Hunter. I live in Allentown. They have my address on there. I came today because I pay over $3,600 for taxes. So I came to see what I'm paying for. And I was sitting back there just waiting and listening to see what's going on. I just want to say that I agree with the gentleman that spoke a few, a couple of time ago, the young gentleman that spoke about to make sure that technology, that technology is good, but don't let it replace critical thinking and personal touch. Because you spoke about how he went to school and how it, having a personal touch of the teacher really helped and how critical thinking helps. So whatever we do with technology, we need to make sure this doesn't stop. I'm also concerned about something I heard a few minutes ago. I don't know if it's true or not, but I need to mention it, about the dumpster and about cancer in the new school, that new school we're gonna be building. If what was stated is correct, then anytime you speak about the new school, you need to mention what is going on with this. As a parent myself, I would like to know what's going on with this. Are we making sure this is cleaned up so when our student goes there that they don't get ill? Because I know what it's like to have a child with disability, you know, and the stress and the mental anguish of that. So we need to make sure, if this is correct, what was stated, that we should make sure it's mentioned at each meeting that the new building is mentioned, what you're doing to correct it and stuff. I also want to indicate for the new building is that we need to make sure the playground is wheelchair accessible. And we need to make sure it has wheelchair swings. We have a playground and sea the beach that's wheelchair accessible and the ground has a certain area that wheelchair can go on and stuff. And since we're building this new building, we need to make sure that it's that way also. Because we're not doing it for also able kids. We're also doing it for disabled kids also and stuff. And the last thing I want to mention is that, are we using local, since I'm paying for it out of my own pocket, some of this stuff because $3,600 I'm paying, are we using local constructor and people from our area or from Lehigh County in order to build this building? Or are we hiring people from New Jersey or from other places and stuff? Because if we're building this building and calling all up money, some of it should stay in our, in our city or in our local or in our Lehigh County. And those are the things that I'm concerned about. I'm not sure what the procedure is because when I fill out this form, it only asks me for my name and my address. It didn't ask for a phone number or anything. So I don't know if you mail back a response back or how does it go? You know, maybe later on, someone can tell me. But those are the things that I'm concerned about. And I hope that you will continue to ask the question about, especially about the cancer and dumpster. And you continue to recognize the gentleman that spoke about critical thinking and about personal touch. It's very important for people, because I attend this school also and it's very important for people to have that. Thank you very much. Have a good day.
Thank you. One second, I just need Dr. Burks to address something really quickly, which is out of protocol, but I have to have this done.
Yes, as you know, we typically don't respond to the public, but because that comment was resonated, I think we will be remiss not, we don't want the public to think that we're building a school in a place that will harm children. So if I could, Mr. Steve Orr, Mr. Ginsfrohm, can you explain just a little bit, if that's okay, just how the process works and what's happening a little bit about cleanup and such of getting the building pad ready? Maybe you can just go, yeah, okay, you're welcome. Because I don't want the public to walk away with such, something so...
So, yes, I can speak to that issue. Not authoritatively in all respects, but from the architect's perspective. There was investigations done of the site and reports... There was investigations done of the site, and reports were prepared that identified that there were not items of environmental concern on the site, on the 16.7 acre portion of the site that the school will be built on. So that was, that was information that was part of the disclosure relative to the agreement and so forth. So there's nothing I'm aware of that I've seen, in fact, I've seen information to the contrary, that there's any sort of environmental concerns with the site.
So you saw the EPA report?
There's reports prepared by firms that do that sort of work, not the EPA specifically, but environmental engineers, environmental scientists that were contracted to investigate the site following the demolition and that sort of thing. You know, there are, and any isolated things that remain were identified, and, you know, maybe in other areas of the site, I don't know, but relative to our site, that's the situation.
Is my understanding, did we do a Phase 1 or a Phase 2 environmental testing on the property, best of your knowledge?
I know Phase 1 was done.
So Phase 1, there is a direct methodology that is used when you acquire property, whether or not there are environmental concerns on the property.
Can the solicitor talk in the microphone, please? Mr. Solicitor, can you talk in the microphone?
Speak in the microphone, please.
Can you talk in the microphone, please? Thank you.
Now, sorry about that. It is my understanding, and it is the process that most entities utilize when they are acquiring vacant land or any form of land to do a Phase 1 environmental assessment of the property as part of a condition prior to entering into an agreement to purchase property. Because once you purchase property with environmental concerns on it, you own those environmental concerns, and you have to remediate those concerns. And that is why we utilized a reputable firm that does this kind of work, did a thorough analysis of this part of the property that we are acquiring. What Mr. Smith was referring to, we don't know, but if it could be, it could be on another portion of the facility itself where there may have been waste disposed of in prior years, but we're not aware of it on this portion of the property, and we came out clean on it, or we wouldn't be talking to you today about a, what is it, an eight-figure construction project if the environmental concerns were identified. So I just wanted to say that we did extensive due diligence in this area, and I think it will be, hoove everybody to understand, we want to dispel the notion that there are cancer-causing agents on this property and the like. If indeed that's the case, we would have had a serious discussion about it. And I am aware that in the past, we have come across properties where we've had serious environmental concerns, and we passed on those properties based upon those assessments. But here, this was a clean assessment, hence we're moving forward with the project.
Thank you so much, Mr. Sultana.
So just to be clear, then, I want to make sure that, you know, again, that the public is aware, so we're not misrepresenting anything on social media or anywhere else, that we're, Dr. Burks, you're right, we're not building a school building on an area that could harm these kids. I wouldn't go for that, and neither would anybody else.
And we were adamant, when we were going through the process, to make sure that these studies were done and these research was done. So, thank you so much for clearing that up.
And we were adamant, because when we built Hayes Elementary School, it was radon arson in the soil, but we had to do two feet of concrete to make sure that, Mr. Smith, you also know that, because you were on the board. So we were due diligent about our diligence to make sure that this site, the acres that it, on the 17 acres that it's on, is clean.
Yes. Thank you so much. Next comment, please?
Bob Smith?
Robert E. Smith Jr., 1060 East Gordon Street. Just want to make sure we're careful on this, that's all. I'm talking about an agenda item now, but there was dumps on that property. I'm great that our property part is going to be clean. I hope we have those environmental reports to look at, too. So that'll be great that the public can be reassured. The water piping being on there is very important, too. So it should be clean. I'm glad it's going to be clean, but the public should see the environmental reports so everybody is reassured. So if everything's good, that's fine. Now, the Director's Report, there's two positions on there, two more positions on there. The state has not even passed a budget yet. We have to watch every penny right now. You should be conserving every penny of spending right now. I'm not saying these positions may not be in the future, you may need them, but enough with the administrative positions hiring, especially when there's no state budget. We're going to be taking a loan out soon if they don't get the budget done. We should be watching the spending. All spending should be frozen. All hiring should be frozen until there's a state budget. I've been on the board, and so have some of you, for many years when we had to take loans out because we couldn't make payroll. If we use all our rainy day fund and there's no state budget, then what? Let's cool it with the spending and new administrators. We don't need any more new administrators. We're running out of seats here as it is for the public. Now, the Personnel Report, change is tough, but retainage of employees is so important as well as new employees. There's a lot of good people, and I'm not going to mention all the names, but on that Personnel Report, there's outstanding individuals leaving this school district. I look at Parkland, I see Allentown people. I look at Northern Lehigh, Bethlehem, Whitehall, all ex-Allentown employees. So the people leaving are getting jobs around us. Why? Let's look at retainage. HR, let's look at retainage, not just new people. Thank you.
No comment.
May I have a motion of approval of the minutes?
I make that motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Nikolov?
Yes.
Ms. Noel?
Yes.
Ms. Hartnett?
Yes.
Ms. Sierra?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Thank you. And now for information reports, is there a report from the Allentown Human Relations Commission?
There currently is no active Human Relations Commission. We might want to take this off for the foreseeable future.
I heard. Yeah. Is there a report from the Allentown Public Library?
Yes, there is a concern. The Allentown Library last month received a check from an estate for almost $2.1 million. It was sent to the library on July, I think they got it by July 7th. Did not, none of the board members knew about this, and I'm bringing this forward to us. None of the board members on that board, the library board, knew that that check had come from, we heard about it, because it took us a year. However, we did not get it, we did not hear anything, and then it didn't happen until I was inquiring about, you know, the school, the, sorry, the library's budget and what we needed, because the school district is over the library by court order, and found out that we received the check a whole month later. So our Executive Director, Renee Hines, I called her, she didn't have a very good reason why she did not, she did not put that through, she was very arrogant at the time. We did have a meeting about that today, she did apologize. However, I would never talk to my boss like that. And nor would I take $2.1 million. We need that money, because we don't know what state's going to do, what the federal department's going to do. That was a windfall for, and it was a very generous gift for the library, and it took a whole month for it to deposit it, and it took almost another month, another month, a whole month to get an explanation why it wasn't. It was deposited into our money market account or something like that, but it wasn't put into the account that ASD uses and the library uses for our operations. So I did bring that up, and I wanted the public to know that that was not ASD holding that money back, that was the Executive Director, Renee Hines, doing that. And she had her reasons, but I have a vote of no confidence for her, and it's really up to our board and our library board to make a discussion, but I wanted to let our board know and our public know that that money was being held, even though it did, like I said, it did accrue interest, but it was not, it wasn't, it was no transparency to the board. And that, you know, the board governs policy, budget, and we picked the superintendent, but on that board, we picked the Executive Director. And the Executive Director is our one employee, and our one employee was not transparent nor honest. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. Is there any report from the Allentown Recreation Commission?
Yes, I have a report. I'd like to share an update from the Allentown Recreation Commission. This month, we saw progress on key projects, including the completion of the Stevens Park Basketball Court, the wrap-up of Phase 2 of the Jordan Parks Skate Park, and the start of the work on the Dixon Pedestrian Bridge. Planning continues for Roosevelt Park upgrades, Bogert's covered bridge restoration, and the upcoming urban forestry master plan launching in September. I want to thank our families and community members for their engagement and input, which helps guide the commission's work to ensure our parks remain safe, accessible, and welcoming spaces for all. Thank you.
Thank you. There is a small report from the ASD Foundation. ASD Foundation would like to thank Allentown School District for hosting a tremendous Back to School Bash. It was a huge success with over 9,000 students and families being served. ASD Foundation was a silver sponsor and had over 800 visitors at our book giveaway booth. Fifteen board members were directly involved, and we would like to thank everyone who helped with the planning and supporting of the Back to School Bash. ASD Foundation is excited about the upcoming school year and stand ready to support Allentown School District and its strategic plan. And that's it. There is a small report from the Carmen Lehigh Intermediate Unit. The 2025-2026 CLIU organizational goals focus on strengthening collaboration, improving communication, maintaining service quality with fiscal responsibility, and reinforcing our commitment to service. Key initiatives includes enhancing stakeholder engagement, clear internal and external communication, effective budgeting aligned with organization priorities, and the development of new programs to support districts. Notable, the plan includes the revival of cabinet-to-cabinet meetings with district teams and the exploration of a membership program for newly appointed district administration. We are also pleased to introduce Lucia Meletto O'Brien as the new Director of Transportation. Lucia brings over 20 years of experience in the school transportation and educational operations. And that ends my report for tonight. Is there a report from the LCTI?
The meeting.
LCTI meets next week.
Okay, thank you so much. Now, may I have a motion for the Board of, for the approval of the Board of Directors' report?
I make that motion.
Second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Nikolov?
Yes.
Ms. Noel?
Yes.
Ms. Hartnett?
Yes.
Ms. Sierra?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Thank you. May I have a motion of approval for the policy agenda? Make that motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Nikolov?
Yes.
Ms. Noel?
Yes.
Ms. Hartnett?
Yes.
Ms. Sierra?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Thank you. May I have a motion of approval of the Secretary and Treasurer's report?
I make that motion.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Nikolov?
Yes.
Ms. Noel?
Yes.
Ms. Hartnett?
Yes.
Ms. Sierra?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
May I have a motion of approval for the Superintendent's report?
I make that motion.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Noel?
Yes.
Ms. Hartnett?
Yes.
Ms. Sierra?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Nikolov?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Thank you. Before I present the Personnel Report, I just want to let the public know, we are withdrawing the recommendation for hire for William Allen Assistant Principal Meg Pier. May I have a motion of approval of the Personnel Report? One second, could we please also remove the resignation, please?
You mean separate it?
Yes, separate it.
Okay. So we'll vote on the resignation first and then the rest of the Personnel Report first. So may I have a motion of approval of the resignation portion of the Personnel Report?
I make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Hartnett?
Yes.
Ms. Sierra?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
No.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Nikolov?
Yes.
Ms. Noel?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-1.
Thank you. Now, may I have a motion for the rest of the Personnel Report?
I make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Hartnett?
Yes.
Ms. Sierra?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Nikolov?
Yes.
Ms. Noel?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Thank you. Tonight, the Board approved new administrative hires. Mr. James, would you please come forward and introduce our new hires?
Thank you, School Board Directors, Dr. Burks. We're very pleased tonight to introduce our new faculty members to Allentown School District.
So we ask all of our administrators, if I can have all of our new administrators, if you will stand over here near me, thank you so much. I can have them all here. Okay, our very first administrator is Anaiz Fuentes, who is the Assistant Principal of Mullenberg Elementary School. We're also happy to have Carl Conkle, who is the Supervisor of Instructional Technology. Brandy Rinko, Acting Assistant Principal at Rob Middle School. And also Teacher of the Year. Nicholas Snyder, Acting Assistant Principal at Hayes Elementary School. Say it again, I'm sorry. Sure. Sure. Absolutely. Come on, Mr. Singh. Let's give it up for all of our new administrators.
As a part of our budget this year, we did expand our AEA positions. We added nearly eighty new positions. We added positions in math and science, because we expanded our labs in our high schools. Our new Bridgeview Academy, we added computer science. We added physics. We added several positions within the Foreign Language Department, added some to our electives and related arts. And we also added a considerable amount of human capital to our social workers as well.
Congratulations again. I'm so excited about all the new hires that we have. We are here to educate our students, and we're going to do everything it takes to make sure that it gets done. May I have a motion of approval of the building report?
I make that motion.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Mr. Secretary, please call the roll.
Ms. Noel?
Yes.
Ms. Hartnett?
Yes.
Ms. Sierra?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
It's a hard yes.
Thank you. Ms. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Nicoloff?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you. May I have a motion of approval of the finance report?
I make that motion.
Second.
Second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Sierra?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Nicoloff?
Yes.
Ms. Noel?
Yes.
Ms. Hartnett?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
At this time, we're only taking public comments on non-agenda items. Once recognized, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Please note remarks are limited to three minutes, and the microphone will be disabled at the end of the three minutes. Please also be informed, the School Board of Directors appreciate public comment. However, we're not able to respond to these comments. Administration will address your concerns and update the board on the status of your concern. Mr. Secretary?
Bob Smith.
Robert E. Smith Jr., I live at ten sixty East Gordon Street. Thank you, Madam President. I reached out to some members of the board. I didn't get a respond back on the LCTI clarification. Or Dr. Burks, some parents are concerned that their kids can't go all day to LCTI. I just think it should be communicated better about LCTI. Please make sure the parents know what the new policy is toward LCTI. Also, the evaluation for the superintendent is not on the website. It was, I understand you're going over it in executive session, but it didn't state if you were going over last year's evaluation or this year's evaluation, because neither one is on the website.
It's there.
Well, it wasn't there.
It's been there.
You just put it today?
No, it's been there.
The evaluation, the raise was voted on? Was the raise voted on publicly? Okay. Crickets, I see.
Solicitor?
The raise should be voted on publicly. Three percent or four percent should be voted on publicly. Meetings in one night, this is about transparency. Squeezing four committee meetings and then a board meeting in one night is just unacceptable. What if there was something important that the public wanted to talk about? How could they even come back to the board now on this? You already voted on it. And you had five board members here tonight. So obviously, you didn't do the one meeting for the board, because you can't get nine in one meeting. One meeting a month, you can't get nine board members. Let's go back to the second Thursday committee for a Thursday board meeting. At least maybe everybody will show up. Health positions, I heard a lot about positions tonight being hired. But I also heard that there's positions in the health department, four positions for health for the middle schools has been cut to two. I think health is very important for our students, and I think that should be looked at. Thank you very much. And please put the raise out there, public vote. Thank you.
No comment. We're leaving it alone. No, no comment.
Any other, any other public comment card? No, that's it? Okay. Is there any old business to come before the board?
I do have something. I don't know if it would qualify as old or new. I did a quick look at the policies during our break. There's only seven that mention cell phones directly. None of them contain any language pertaining to how cell phones are supposed to be stored or carried and that. And so just wanted to put that to rest. There's no policy. If there's that behavior, it's not adhering to our policies.
Thank you. Is there any new business to come before the board? May I have a motion?
I make that motion.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Have a good night, everyone.